Welcome to the Cave Creek Town Council meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. And January is close to being over. We have a silent roll call. I guess we already had that. And we'll do for the pledge of allegiance and Stacy Daniel has agreed to say aye for us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stacy. Public announcements, the only one I have, I enjoy the inauguration yesterday. I kind of liked it being indoors and seeing all those big paintings of George Washington and all that sort of stuff in the background. And you've got to admire the singer Carrie Underwood. Standing there with no music and then just ripping it off. So, yep. Another peaceful transfer of power in our republic. Call to the public. Oh, excuse me. Does anyone on council have any other announcements you'd like to make?
Stacy Daniel. Hello, Mayor Morris and council members. I'm Stacy Daniel. I live at 41740 North Cohava Ranch Road. The phrase wildland urban interface is defined as an area where human development meets undeveloped wildland. It's a zone where wildfires can have a catastrophic impact on homes and people's lives. Cave Creek is surrounded by these zones. Residents who live in these zones have a different perspective and a heightened level of concern about wildfires than say others located elsewhere in the town. On January 8th, 2025, Cave Creek had a wildfire within its boundary. Initially, the fire was located near the north end of Cave Creek Regional Park on state land, state trust land that was not easily accessible. The town's last updated Facebook post regarding this wildfire was reported at 5:31 PM, indicating that no homes were threatened by the fire and Tonto National Forest crews were monitoring it and will be able to protect any homes with fire equipment. However, the situation changed and by 7:00 PM winds became erratic. The fire advanced closer to nearby homes. It was very unnerving that night, knowing that flames were close. The smoke was thick and no new information or updates were forthcoming. Two suggestions I have to help with messaging and alleviate residents confusion and frustration are have the town regularly post updated information on their social media until the fire is no longer a danger. Regardless if there's a change or not, we're all looking for it, trying to find information. Have the town send out updated information via code reds, emergency or community alerts. So news is traveling out to the residents instead of residents trying to search and sift through various media posts to find answers. Our wildfire season has become a year round event. New residents moving into Cave Creek may not fully understand our wildfire issues or how to take precautions. I would like to suggest that the town set up a yearly program to inform residents why defendable defendable space matters. How different state, federal and local firefighting organizations work together by using one of our previous wildfires as an example? And how do notifications get relayed to code red? In the meantime, I ask if there's a way to deter dangerous combination of hunting, target shooting, and illegal motorized vehicles in open space during hot or dry conditions and high winds. We heard gunshots this past weekend. Motivate local and out of town property owners, the need to reduce wildfire threats on their property. A thank you to our friends and neighbors who offered help and assistance. Our neighborhood is very grateful to all the firefighters and the first responders who managed and controlled this wildfire and to the sheriff's department and the town of Cave Creek for averting another potential wildfire disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, we cannot answer back, but there will be something in the town manager's report that of interest.
Ron Sova.
Ron.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Ron Sova, Cave Creek Town Corps residents, resident rather. Your revised agenda dated 1/26 added item B under the items under A, which is the quarterly financial report with no public input allowed. Understood why? So I am up here under the call to the public to offer a couple or one observation and suggestion. And that is, I would call your attention, when you get to that item, to look at plate number 10, which is on page 87 of 88 within your revised January 16 budget in the quarterly report. And it's plate 10 basically is activity for the second quarter, the fund balance summary. And within there, there's six lines with $6 amounts. And as an example, you know, under the general fund, I believe the number was, help me here, I don't know, 20, $24 million in it. And my thought was it would be interesting to see in a quarterly report, the backup or the background and what numbers are represented in there. Now, I fully realize I can go to the 200 and whatever it is, 60 page final budget. And there's, there's many areas where I could try and extrapolate those numbers. But as a resident, I don't want to go through 260 pages. I'd like to see it in a clear concise manner. And what's plate 10 is, it's hard to see, it's this one here. If there couldn't be some background and the numbers as to what those six numbers represent. Like I know in the general fund, that includes sales tax, a bed tax, fees, charges, so on and so forth. But perhaps the major ones could be identified in the quarterly report. You know, just adding to this so that a resident would be able to see how it's going for the year as our sales taxes going up, down, are they where they should be pursuant to the budget? And I think that would lead us to look at the liquidity of the town for some time in the future. If we ever have another equivalent of a COVID disaster or God knows what. I just look at that as a resident and say, where are we with our dollars coming in? And we can identify the current expenses going out to run the town. But more importantly, to the future, five years from now or beyond, will we have enough money? And I know Wilhelm did a report, I think, addressing that some time ago, and they seem to think yes. But it would be nice to track on a quarterly basis, and I think this would could be the vehicle in which to do that. So I offer that as a suggestion, and if you'd care to discuss it under item B, fine. And if not, fine also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And that was plate 10? Is your plate 10 you were talking about?
Yes.
Plate 10.
Under the revised agenda, yeah, it'd be page 87 of 88, next to the last.
Okay.
No additional speakers.
Okay, so now we have the town manager meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, Ms. Daniels just left. But the mayor and I. Yeah, could somebody?
Yeah, she'll come back.
Well, real quickly before we, I have a couple other items. So wanted to let the mayor and council know that we had a a public meeting targeted for business leaders in our community on dark skies last week. Had a pretty good turnout for that. We tried to explain the process of what's going to be involved in, you know, moving forward for a possible consideration of the town moving in that direction. Had a pretty good turnout, had good feedback. And so we went ahead and scheduled two public meetings on that on the 28th of this month at 6:00 PM for the public. And for the public also on January 30th at 3:00 PM. Now I see Ms. Daniels in your, I, the mayor indicated earlier that I had a report that tied directly to what you brought up. So while the wildfires were going on in Los Angeles, the mayor was getting a number, as well as the council members, were receiving a number of inquiries and concerns from residents. Plus, we also overlapping had our fire that happened on that same Tuesday of that week. And so the mayor and I discussed, and we're going to organize two different community meetings for residents here in town. The dates are not set yet. We will definitely have one inside the fire station and another one will be at the library. The reason why the dates haven't been set is we're having a little bit of challenge trying to get the date pinned down at the library. It's at the peak season right now, but we're trying to get those finalized. We have the agenda already finalized. We have Daisy Mountain will be there. We have a number of our community partners will be there. Mr. Ford is helping organize this, our community risk assessment director. So I think the timing is very good. Also, we're, we're finalizing the dates for the brush drop off. We had the dates finalized and then we were having some challenges with the construction project going on at the food bank. So we're going to work through those dates and I believe we should have those dates finalized by the end of the week. But again, we're going to do two different dates. I believe one is in March and then I believe the other one is in April. Yes, so we just, I just can't announce the date check, but we will as soon as we can. So I couldn't really get into your points, Ms. Daniels, but I did want to let you know. I've taken note of the concerns about communication, which seems to be the big thing that you were expressing. And I will have staff get back to you because I think some of the information that was shared with us tonight. There are some other mitigating factors that I can't really go into. Okay, so. But I appreciate you bringing that up and I think we're all on the same page here. A lot of the residents have concerns about this. And we're trying to allay their fears is obviously what we saw was horrific. And we don't want that to ever be the situation in our own community. Moving forward, I also wanted to put a reminder out that the state of the town will be held on January 29th at 10:00 AM at the Desert Foothills Library. It's kind of a first come, first served. Usually that room holds about 100 people. So we encourage people to show up early so they can be sure to get a seat. But if you're unable to make it, rest assured that that event will be videotaped and will rebroadcast it on YouTube. That's all I have, Mayor, for a report.
So I was told by one of the, one of Stacy's neighbors that on the Saturday after the fire was put out, there were a bunch of kids on off road motorcycles and the fire started back up and that neighbor brought water and put it out. There's been continually, and I think Ms. Daniels will agree, we have a continual problem up on that flat area where people bypass coming through the Cohava Ranch or the Cohava Springs Road, you know, the road up there. They'll cut across and they'll take off road vehicles and motorcycles. And they drive up and they're tearing that whole area. And it's a problem and it's going to continue being a problem. And it's especially a problem in the fire season because a lot of those mufflers and everything else are low to the ground. And you know, some of these grass, some of these non-native species we have light off like a torch.
Thank you, council member.
I'd like to add something to that. You may have covered that, but the use of firearms is legal out there. And a ricocheting bullet can cause a spark. And so we need to be conscious, maybe even trying to better monitor the use of that area for firearms, whether they're hunting or target practice or what.
A very good point. And while it's not known for sure, it is believed that the start of the fire was a hunter that might have started that. But again, that's not been verified, but that's the belief at this point.
Would that be, now, I don't know if we have anyone in the room that could speak to this, but is, is the ricocheting bullet, is that the major issue?
We're probably getting off, this was really a reports from town manager and I typically, we can't get into discussion, but we can certainly get back to you on that. That's all I had for reports, Mayor. I'm sorry, did you have?
I just wanted to say, Grady, I think you got slightly interrupted when you were telling us about the dark skies meetings. And so if we could get the dates and times of those meetings.
We will definitely get that off. In fact, I believe we've done some promotion on that, but we'll definitely let the council know when those dates are. Again, this is not, and I just want to let the council know, we are not assuming this is going to get approved or changed, but we're going through a lot of public involvement. We found, for instance, with Morningstar, that was very helpful to get the people involved early on for their input. And so we're going to kind of continue it the same way. The idea is we'll do this on the front end before it even goes to planning and zoning for its discussion. So that's, that is the plan, but we'll send an email out on that. Good, good question. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. On the general agenda items, council discussion approval of second quarter fiscal year 2025 budget transfers presented by the finance director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So tonight for the budget transfers, we have a couple items that we need to do transfers for. The first one is for the fire engine that was purchased for the new fire station. So this was actually purchased back in, so in November of 21, council approved making that payment. We got a very significant discount on the fire engine by making the cash deposit in advance for the item. Accounting rules require that we record expenditures when goods or services are received. So we just received the fire engine in the end of November or December. And so in the current fiscal year is when we're recognizing the expenditures. So I believe it was an accounting oversight that happened during the last budget process. I wasn't here. That, that fire engine was not budgeted for because we need to budget for whatever our expenditures are going to be during the year. So this is a transfer taking from multiple places because the engine was 748,000 that we're taking from a water truck that Hal and Tyler have said that they wouldn't be able to get this year. There was a little bit of savings from the fire tender truck. The fire equipment, there should be some savings there of about 100,000, some savings in the fire station construction for the remodel, about 200,000, and then the remainder would come from contingency of about 159,000. Also part of this item, so when Mr. Ford did his quarterly report back in August and he talked about going for the site visit to go take a look at the engine and inspecting all of that. And he talked about some of the modifications and things that needed to be done at that point in time. Those had an additional cost of approximately 11,540. So what we're asking is ratification of those expenditures that have, have been made. It's essentially a change order and the current town code does not have a provision for the town manager to be able to approve change orders. It's a very common provision that you see in a lot, a lot of the municipalities that 10%. Sometimes there'll be like a cap on that, but usually about 10% is the rate that organizations go with. We don't have that, so we have to come to you for $11,000. The other item is for some well rehab that Sean had talked about back in the November 18th meeting, there were a couple of agreements that Sean had requested approval. And the additional amount that's expected to bring those online during the fiscal year 25. So that brings the total on that amount to about 186,000. And there are a couple of projects that he said that would not proceed as anticipated. So we're taking a portion of the amount from the 38th Street Booster Replacement Project and a portion from the rehab of the six inch water line across Cave Creek Wash. Those will have available capacity in the 25 budget. Do you have any questions on any of those?
I see none.
I do. I guess I have one. Are you going to bring it forward to, to have the town manager be able to transfer funds?
Yes, that's on the list and we will talk about it during the quarterly report.
Oh, good. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're ready for, let's see, is there a public comment on this there? There is public comment.
I have no, we shouldn't.
No comment. Okay, so we're ready for motion.
I'll make it. Motion to approve second quarter fiscal year 2025 budget transfers.
Second.
It's business that needs to be conducted. Thank you.
I second that too. Other comments from council? This is financial, so a roll call vote please.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Hi.
Councilmember Augerton?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Hi. Motion passes 7-0. We're on to number two, which is council discussion approval of case number SPR 24-02 Black Mountain Vista Site Plan Review.
Excuse me, there's a second motion on this item.
Did I miss it?
Did I miss it?
Oh, I'm on the old agenda.
So am I.
Well, it's on there too.
Yeah, same thing.
Oh, there's another.
Okay, shall I do it? Motion to ratify the additional cost of approximately $11,540 for the minor modifications to the Cave Creek Fire Station, number one, fire engine.
Second. Comments? Thinking none, this is financial. Another roll call vote please.
Yes. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Hi.
Councilmember Augerton?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Hi. Motion carries 7-0. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to the council discussion approval of case number SPR 24-02 Black Mountain Vista Site Plan Review for the development of a mixed use live work building on 0.35 acres consisting of one commercial office retail unit with an employee parking garage on the first floor and one residential unit on the second floor. It will be located at the intersection of Cave Creek Road and Choya.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor of the council, Vice Mayor Ray and Mayor Morris, congratulations on being elected. I haven't had the opportunity really to come in and say that. So yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been a while since I've been in front, so happy to be before y'all again. And also congratulations on Councilmember Friedman and Councilmember Driscoll to being elected. So look forward to all the good things y'all will do for the community this year, so in a couple of years. So what we have is a case number, site plan review application, SPR 24-02 Black Mountain Vista. The applicant is A-line Architect Concepts. Location is southwest of East Choya Road and North Cave Creek Road. The zoning of the property is Town Corps Commercial. The applicant is proposing development of a mixed use live work building on 0.35 acres consisting of one commercial office retail unit with an employee parking garage on the first floor and one residential unit on the second floor. It's in accordance with the zoning ordinance with the allowed use, multiple residential dwelling units in conjunction with commercial uses, which is live work or an allowed use within the Town Corps Commercial Zone with approval of site plan by town council upon recommendation of the planning commission. The bulk regulations that they've demonstrated compliance with would be the building setbacks, which is for this property would be 15 feet from the front, 25 from the, 25 from the rear, 5 feet from the sides, which they've demonstrated compliance with. Building height of 25 feet from natural grade, they've demonstrated compliance with that as well. The lot coverage is 60% that they're allowed for the lot. They're minimizing it with 20% or 21% of the lot. The landscaping there are required is 25%. They are proposing 38%. In total, parking what is required, the applicant is required eight parking spaces. The applicant proposes 13 parking spaces, 11 for commercial and two for the residential unit. The applicant has also provided an outdoor lighting photometric analysis, which demonstrates compliance with the outdoor lighting ordinance, still be evaluated at the permitting stages though. So we'll make sure that it is in fact in compliance with that. No signage is being proposed at the moment, but also signage will have to adhere to the town of Cave Creek requirements, which will also be assessed at the building permit stages. With screening, the applicant is required to provide a solid method of screening that is at a minimum of six feet in height where they are adjacent or abutted to residential zones. The applicant is proposing a six foot high CMU wall along the east property line to meet the required screening requirement. The applicant is also adequately screening trash enclosure closures, HVAC units with a solid method of screening. The access point applicant proposes a two-way access drive along the rear of the property where the access, where there's an existing right of way. The applicant is proposing to dedicate an additional property of the right of way as an ingress, egress and public utility easement to widen the current 19.8 foot right of way to 24 feet. The town engineer will assess the approval. At the regular scheduled planning commission meeting held on Thursday, December 19th, 2024, the planning commission by a vote of four to zero voted to recommend approval of the case SPR-24-02 Black Mountain Vista. To conclude, the town staff has prepared a list of recommended conditions of approval for council consideration as recommended for approval from the planning commission contained in exhibit E. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with the general plan, zoning ordinance, technical design guideline, number four landscaping. The applicant is not asking for any variance or any exceptions on this project. Staff would like to know that the town engineer, the utilities director, building official and zoning department, which is, which would be me, reviewed this project entirely and did not raise any, the other departments not raised any questions or concerns with this project. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, are there any questions?
Questions from council?
I have a question. Was there any feedback from local neighbors?
At this moment, Vice Mayor, we haven't had any comments from neighbors or any concerns or questions.
Nobody attended the plan commission. Nobody gave any feedback.
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
The only two members of the public that were in attendance that evening were Councilmember Driscoll and Councilmember Friedman.
Could I ask, this is kind of, you know, offhand, but was this the location where the golf place was going to be?
It's, Vice Mayor, it's across the street from that area. Correct, correct. The, there's existing development behind it, which would be the, I believe, the apartment rental units. Correct.
Question? This, the site plan review has conditions of approval and number 18 was added about right of way improvements. Could you come in on that a bit more? Explain where that fits in on the plan?
Yeah, so it was added later at such time that the town engineer would request for that to be included to really just more of, that the applicant was on the same page that we will not be in doing any improvements to what they're required, meaning they're going to be required to improve that right of way. And that we will not be doing any maintenance. It'd be up to the HOA to oversee the maintenance repairs and improvements on that right of way. Even though we still would be owning it, but they are ultimately required to improve, maintain and enhance it, so.
And is that right of way that is parallel to Cave Creek Road and the alleyway? Or part of the access off Cave Creek Road?
It wouldn't be off the, Councilmember Driscoll wouldn't be off the Cave Creek Road. It'd be the additional right of way that's, that's viewed as an alley at this moment, but it's. it's it's technically viewed at a town town standpoint, right of way.
Okay.
Do we have any idea who the tenant will be, or does that not matter?
At this moment, Vice Mayor, we do not have any, the applicant doesn't have any, doesn't have any tenants, they're just looking into creating this building, seeing how well it does and explore options from there, so no tenants at this moment.
Okay.
I just had a rhetorical, sorry. I just had a rhetorical question. Would you, in the future going forward, favor a design review process for the commercial corridor? I know we've had discussions often over the years, but in Scottsdale, this would be the norm, but it's becoming more the norm here in Cave Creek. Would a design review process in addition to the review by planning and zoning and council have affected the final outcome significantly or or not, do you think?
You want, I'll, Councilmember, move that to the zoning administrator and Development Services Director to answer that.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Augerton, based on the commercial land inventory that that's left in town, they're creating another step for design review or development review, doesn't really, there's there's not very many properties left that, I mean, the term commonly referred to as the cake is baked. I don't know if if a design review in this case would have changed necessarily any anything related to, obviously, the height and setbacks being what they are and the fairly minimal development area that these lots have, they're rather small lots. I think what they've done with the building massing actually breaks up the building quite nicely. The streetscape that they'll be putting within the right of way and and within an easement along Cave Creek Road, all of those things kind of in concert, the things that are required of the by the ordinance now, working in concert will actually do what a design review would do otherwise. We don't have, once again, I I had a conversation with a potential developer today that's looking at property about exceptions and variances and we don't have any of those tools in the ordinance to allow for variation from what the ordinance requires. And that's really where a design review comes in key, if someone says, well, the ordinance requires a twenty five foot max height, we would like to thirty two and here's why and here's how it would be a better product, and they can show you side by side of of what that looks like. That's that's really not how we're geared or made, like a Scottsdale, city of Scottsdale. For my money, every every land use decision there is essentially a zoning ordinance unto itself, every subdivision, every development is basically, here's the zoning requirements for this parcel of land. And that's just not how how our ordinance is built, and I think that's a good thing.
Well, we have a retreat coming up, maybe we could chat about this at the retreat. And you're informed on this and I'm not, I'm just trying to rhetorically ask, what can we do? Because there will be projects coming to you that will be replacement of existing commercial. I think we'll see more of that coming up because the inventory is limited. And you think of the lots like between the car wash and the the building to the east, there's some lots that'll be coming on that are still virgin desert, but it's probably fairly reasonable to expect there'll be buildings that'll be coming in for replacement or augmentation. And it just seems as if part of the uniqueness of the downtown corridor is the dilapidated original buildings that have been repurposed. But as we continue to put new structures on former lots, I just would think, again, I I just would think that design review in whatever form or ordinance flexibility would be something that would benefit planning. But we're just starting to blend project by project into Scottsdale colors and designs and and everything else, Disney desert for landscaping, all that kind of stuff. And I know I'm a throwback and I fully admit that, but it just, I just would wish we could ask you guys, or if you had different authorities, is there anything you'd like to see done differently that would maintain private property rights and certainly go through the process that we have now? But and not be Sedona's McDonald's with the red walls and the yellow arches, I'm not suggesting that, but if you look at some recent projects, the the development of the town homes right down to the curb, in the church even, right down to the curb.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may, Mr. Augerton, Councilmember Augerton is making some really good points, but I think it might be, this is not probably the place for it, and I think it's it's really good philosophical discussions, but I think it might be better at the retreat to get into design review at that time. And I'm sorry for for cutting you off, but it might be more appropriate and we get more into substance than we can here.
Okay, we'll we'll table that to the, to the retreat. Other questions? Okay, there is public comment.
David Phelps?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. When I read the minutes of the P and Z meeting, what really stuck out to me on this was both Planning Commissioner Solva and Miller made very strident comments about breaking up the mass that this project is bringing to the town core. One of the areas of mass that Mr. Solva pointed out was shown on the elevations that are in your, excuse me, in your packet. And Mr. Miller pointed out about the front wall that will be bordering along the streetscape, excuse me, with Cave Creek Road. The six foot tall block wall is, I believe, on top of a three foot tall retaining wall, which gives us a nine foot wall along our streetscape and Cave Creek Road. If, and it's one sort linear structure, there's no breaks in it anywhere. If you just drive a little bit further south, you can see what happens when you have choices where you can break up that line and you can change elevations with fencing that's out along the roadway and you can change materials. We had a little more flexibility before, and I think since two oh seven, we we live in so much fear of making developers do anything with their property, excuse me again, that we're afraid to go into the design review component. If we had different breaks in something linear, like a nine foot tall wall or along Cave Creek Road, I think we'd appreciate it. And I don't know what the height could be right on the property line for a commercial building. I have a feeling it could be higher than what is being proposed here, and I'm not against what the development is. I just think that we could get to a better result if we had some tools in the toolbox to deal with things like straight planes, and those were the comments that came from your planning commissioners, Commissioner Solva and Commissioner Miller, and I'm thankful they're there because they asked the right questions, how can we deal with these planes? Solva made a comment about using different blocks configurations, real simple, it's still masonry, but instead of eight inch block, it's four inch tall block just to break up the lines. I have a feeling that the architect had in mind what we call vertical joints, where all the joints align on the on the masonry, and that is a style. And there's different kinds of block that can break up that big solid mass. But I think the mass that's going to come home on this project is going to be the one right along Cave Creek Road, and I think this is going to be the one that gets by us because we want to defend the owner's property rights and we don't have the tools in our toolbox to deal with a straight linear wall, no curve to it. It's just right where, right where it wants to be, right there on the property line. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Okay. Are this ready for a motion then?
I'm ready. Motion to approve the site plan review for case number SPR dash twenty four dash zero two.
I'll second that. You had the, you had the first comment.
I was at that meeting, I listened very closely, it was the first zoning meeting I've been to, that's one of the reasons I went, I wanted to see what was going on and meet the commissioners. They asked a lot of questions like Mr. Phelps was alluding to a second ago. I thought they were thorough, I thought that they were answered, and they also mentioned, I'm pretty sure that they were going to break up the lines. I thought that came out, maybe I'm incorrect, but I remember hearing something about that. But I think it's a fine project and I think it should go forward.
Comments are more about, of course, this is a site review and we have, I mean, if it meets, if it meets, this is what we had a an issue on six months ago, year ago, why are we even having these? Because if it meets the town code, we have basically no opportunity but but to approve it. Now, there are two people in this room, the the Planning Commission and the Planning Department that can bring forth changes to code to deal with these issues, but we have to do our thinking ahead of time. Talking and complaining about it doesn't do any good because it's that's what's in the code now, so if we want to change that, change it, bring forth a proposal.
Mr. Mayor, this was one of the things that we had talked about, perhaps we have a discussion of this at the offsite, simply because we had talked about updating the planning and zoning code in toto. And that might be a good topic of discussion for an hour or so.
Yeah, we're on this one here, but I I I think that that the appropriate place for that is not in these meetings, not in the site review, unless it's referred out to somebody, we see a problem, it's referred back to the town organizations that are charged with dealing with things like this, and but it can't be on an individual. Everything is a custom designed project, it has to be in town code with our current structure. So I'm going to vote in favor of it, I was really no choice, but other comments from council?
I have a question.
Yep.
Was the applicant at that meeting?
Vice Mayor Ray, they they were at the meeting and they did cover that and confirmed that it would be a three foot wall in the frontage. It's a three foot retaining wall is what they provided. No, they just indicated it'd be a three foot wall, retaining wall at the front.
Yes, I'm confused.
Yeah, I am too.
Three foot wall or is it a nine foot wall?
Based off of the, asking the question directly to the applicant, I had asked the question if it would be a three foot retaining wall at and that being that, and they they confirm yes, they didn't add any additional and on the plans, it just states it's a retaining wall, doesn't add that it'll be adding more walls on the retaining wall, it solely states that it's a retaining.
This is Brian Labenthal, am I able to speak?
Hey, Brian, yes, I didn't know if you were all around there, but Brian is a part of the team with the A Line Architects. Brian, I had asked Heidi that day if it was going to be a three foot wall at the front because it didn't mention anything other than retaining wall, and I just wanted to confirm that is still the, still the case.
Correct, the hope is that you're going to see the retailer office spaces on the first level, they're visible to the street, so there is no wall blocking that. It's just a retaining wall for civil, you know, water needs. Yeah, there is no block of visibility to the front of the buildings.
No solid block wall facing Cave Creek.
It's only on the alley side that we have the six foot hall, the six foot tall wall that kind of act as kind of a kind of safety for the parking.
Brian, just to reiterate on that, the three foot wall is just at the front for the drainage and engineering drainage purposes, correct?
Correct.
And on the rear portion, where you are required to put a solid method of screening, you're going to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance with a six foot high wall for screening, since you're adjacent to residential zone properties, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, glad you're on the phone.
Okay, other comments from council?
No, good.
Okay, not financial, so we have motion, so I guess we're ready for a vote. All is in favor of approval of SPR twenty four dash zero two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes seven zero, and we are on to council discussion approval of a firming water delivery agreement between the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, C A W C D, and the town for delivery of Arizona Water Banking Authority water supplies in case of a water shortage presented by the Utilities Director. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, sorry I'm not there in person, but this is, as indicated, it's the Arizona Water Bank Authority has been storing water on behalf of the state since nineteen ninety six. So while there's been excess cap water, Colorado River water available, they've been storing it underground to generate long term storage credits, and they've been doing that primarily for municipal and industrial users, of which the town is one. So but for us to gain access to this water, we need to be able to deliver, get it delivered to us via the Central Arizona Project Canal. So what the firming agreement is, is actually just a mechanism with the Central Arizona Water Conservation Districts, that's who runs this Central Arizona Project Canal is a transportation contract to allow them to get as accessed, have us get access to the Arizona Water Banking Authority water. So this goes back to our master planning efforts, we believe, come twenty twenty seven, there'll be some shortages in our Colorado River allocation, which is our primary source of water, so having this firming agreement in place goes towards meeting some of our goals of being able to make short term, long term solutions for meeting the town's water needs. It's a pretty standard contract, it actually, once the town executes, it goes back to the Central Arizona Project, and then their staff actually will execute it because it's a standard contract that they have. It's just something we haven't had in place, and we're just putting this in place for as another tool for our water conservation, long term water conservation efforts. So with that, I can answer any more questions?
Questions?
Water out there by Palo Verde that we have a year's supply of?
Pardon, Captain, you repeat that, sir?
Is this the water that's being stored out by Palo Verde currently underground in the aquifers?
No, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, I believe, so the town has been storing some of our excess unused portion of our CAP allocation. We've been using a facility called Hieroglyphics, which is on the Central Arizona Project around one hundred sixty third Avenue. The Central Arizona Conservation District, or actually know that Arizona Water Banking Authority actually has access to, I believe, over twenty different recharge facilities. I believe the one, the Tonopah facility is the one out on the west side of the valley, is one that they have access to, but they actually have a number all the way through Pima County that they use, so yeah, this gives us some access to that water, they still have to recover it, but it's just another piece of the puzzle for us to to look forward to or work with.
The answer is no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, other questions? Okay, there is public comment on this.
I have no one we shouldn't speak.
Okay, ready for a motion?
Motion? Motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Your comment.
This is what we need to to get our water banked through the water bank, so absolutely need to get done, and it's really a no brainer.
No brainer.
I want to thank the Vice Mayor, the staff and anyone who is involved in the water conservation storage over the last couple of years, this is a major step forward for Cave Creek.
Okay, so this is used by a voice vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And we're on to number four, which is council discussion approval, authorization of town manager to approve the purchase installation of mission remote monitoring systems at utility sites with Western Environmental Equipment Company for an amount up to hundred fifty thousand dollars over the next two calendar years presented by the Utilities Director.
Again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, so I've got a few slides just to explain the mission system, Brian, can you go next slide, please? So over the last, since two thousand eighteen, we've installed mission systems at twelve of our utility sites, that includes reservoir boosters, lift stations. It's a very easy to monitor system, it does not replace our higher level SCADA system, SCADA being supervisor, control and data acquisition. We have the SCADA system at our two treatment plants and runs the sites out in Desert Hills. That allows staffed higher level of control, they can change pump set points and do things like turn pumps on and off remotely. The mission system doesn't let us do that, it's actually just more user friendly and just allows all the staff to see what's going on in the system, and it's it's very, it's set up to be used on things like a phone or a tablet. So it's a little bit easier to use on a computer, and it sends out automatic reports on the system, which has been useful, it's helped us look at the performance of the sites that we've had it on. So we started installing it. So we started installing it just sort of, I hate to say ad hoc, but just as we were doing improvements to individual sites. So next slide, Brian. So what we're trying to do is, and this is, just shows all the sites that we currently have it on. We go all the way from the west side, our twenty-fourth and Cloud, pressure reducing valve meter connection to Desert Hills. All the way up through our Rockaway Reservoir currently have these installed. So mainly they're on the Cave Creek Water System and the wastewater system, but not all of the, the system. So one of the things we wanted to do is actually add it to the, the C A P boosters. It just gives the staff a better way to look at these more efficiently. Next slide, Brian. This is an example of just the, the detailed information we get on any individual site. And there's also a lot of graphing features that are built in to allow us to look at performance. And when we talk to developers, we have much more information. So I usually use this system than our, our plant SCADA system and it's more portable to all staff. Next slide, Brian. So for this calendar year, what we wanted to do is actually install the mission system as part of the improvements that are ongoing with the central, our C A P booster sites. The four booster sites. And then we also found our Seventh Street Booster in Desert Hills. That site does not have a, the, the way that site's set up. The SCADA system does not monitor the, of the level of the reservoir. It becomes a challenge because we've had a few times where the reservoirs overfilled, staff don't know about it until a neighbor tells us about it, so it's not ideal. So we wanted to initially just put on those four booster pump stations in Seventh Street and Desert Hills. But we thought a little further out, there'd really be nice to get this installed on all sites. So we have a few other sites in Desert Hills to complete. And another pressure reducing valve on Cave Creek Road, which will become pretty critical between our pressure zones one and four. As the Phoenix Interconnect comes online. So we thought we'd come back to council and ask for authority to install the mission systems all at once. Instead of sort of, we've been doing individual projects before. Western Environmental Equipment Company is the exclusive sole vendor for the mission systems in Arizona. And there's a letter associated in the package that shows that. And we're looking to get the council authorities. So for the next two calendar years, we can work with them within our capital budgets and our operational budgets just to complete installing the mission systems at all the sites. It'll just give staff a better view on all the sites that we have. And it's a very useful system and staff are really appreciative of having it. So we just want to get it up to all of our sites. So next slide, Brian. So we're just asking the council to authorize the town manager to execute the contracts. So that gives us the authority to continue to install what we think is a very useful system for the town's utilities. So with that, I can answer any questions.
I have a couple. Was this budgeted?
Um, within the cap booster pump station is one of the improvements we wanted to do. And Seventh Street Booster is not, but because of the overflows we've had at that site. So we're going to do that with operational funds. And then as we do some other, in the upcoming years, we actually have a, a couple of projects to do reservoir rehabs out in Desert Hills. We were going to add it with those systems and otherwise use operational funds to, to get the, the system done. We've been sort of doing it with operational and capital projects over since twenty eighteen. So we just want to complete it and be done with it and, and be more complete.
Um, the, the flexibility and on phones and they, and, and you can actually, you can shut things down, start things up, et cetera. With these, with this, with these phones and things?
Um, not with this system, with, with one exception. We set it up at our sewage, our lift stations, our wastewater lift stations. The two stations that feed the Ranch Manana site are Chipperosa Lift Station and Stagecoach. Those are the only ones that we have that we set them up with a relay system. So that staff in an emergency can actually shut down the stagecoach and Chipperosa Lift Stations to control an overflow at Ranch Manana. So that's the only pump control we have in the system. Everything else is just monitoring, but it's a very useful system. It's very easy to get information out of it. It's proved useful in both the master planning efforts. And discussions with developers on, you know, how the systems are working. And it's allowed us to identify some things where we've had to do some site improvements. And not all the sys, all, not all the sites right now have a SCADA system. So this, this gives us an eye on all the sys, all the sites. And it doesn't have a lot, it doesn't require us to give the full control. Cause once you're in the SCADA system, it's, it's kind of hard to control accessibility for set points and pumps on and off. So it, it, it's a very user friendly system and it's, it's proven very useful for us.
What I'm worried about here is security, that, that you've, you know, hackers, et cetera.
Well, again, since this one's not giving us a system control, except for the, the little nuances with relays we installed at the two sites. Everything else is just monitoring, so it's not a supervised, supervisory control system. It's just a monitoring system. It's used by actually, we've, since it's found out, it's actually used by several other utilities in the, in the valley. Just for monitoring of remote sites. So it just gives us an eye on those sites, what's going on.
Okay.
Fair question. Uh, what would be the life expectancy of this system duration?
Um, since, since the first system was installed in twenty eighteen, we've had two of the systems where we've had card failures on them. We've had to replace them, but the, of the twelve systems, they've been, most of them have, were installed in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. It's when we did most, most of the installs. So it's usually if, if they're continuing to run, and they're all currently upgraded to a four G network, I believe. So they're working on the five G. They used, initially the first ones we got were three G enabled. So we should be good for another five to ten years with these systems. You know, if a motherboard, a control board fails, we just replace them as, as we needed. They're not that expensive, actually.
Other questions? Okay, I'll make the motion. I move to approve item number four.
Second.
Um, roll call, please. Oh, excuse me, I have public comment.
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, let's, let's have the roll calls.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero and we're on to number five, which is. Council discussion authorization of town manager to execute a purchase agreement between the town of Cave Creek buyer. And Barry Wu Cash, the seller at the appraised value of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And approval authorizing the finance director to make necessary budget transfers to execute the per, purchase. And that's why you stated the table.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mayor, members of council. Every year in July, the town remits payment to Mr. Barry Wu Cash. Who's the property owner of the vacant parcel that is adjacent directly south of, of Town Hall. In that lease agreement, there's conditions that if the owner ever wished to proceed with selling or otherwise divesting that property, that the town would essentially have first right of refusal to do so. In the past, the owner, in, in these types of talks, the owner has been resistant to selling that property. This year, I just asked him if he was interested in selling that property. And he said it, it depended on what the appraised value came back at, where he would actually consider doing that. So that was in July. In August, staff obtained an appraisal of the property from C B R E. Who's a very reputable appraisal firm, among other things. And they came back with a value of four hundred and thirty. When that number was relayed to the owner. He made it clear that his desire would be to sell to the town for the appraised price. What we had since discussed with Mr. Wu Cash was that we would give a, a sum down in this fiscal year. And then pay off the balance in the next fiscal year. So there will be a, as part of the budget process, council will need to, to consider that additional expenditure. The three hundred and eighty thousand should approval be given tonight to proceed. Staff is asking for fifty thousand to put earnest money down for that property. Then the remaining three hundred and eighty thousand would be paid after July first, were appropriated in the budget. Staff has long examined this property as suitable for expanding Town Hall facilities. Either by expansion, renovation, or growing out of our Town Hall administrative building. Also, you know, parking for Town Hall functions, et cetera. The, obviously, you know, further talks and discussions will proceed with what we do with the Town Hall. Is its service life is, is probably getting a little long in the tooth. And it's probably time to examine expansion and remodel of that facility. So that's really the, the details of the, of the proposal, Mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If this property is not purchased by the town, if we don't approve this tonight, would it go up for sale to the general public?
That would be up to the owner. The owner is, has not expressed putting up for sale to the general public. What I will say is he's currently getting essentially twelve hundred dollars a month from the town. And has been doing so for approximately twelve years. So he's got a steady.
Is that a, is that a contract or is that month to month?
It, we pay it for the year, but it, it averages out to twelve hundred a month.
Okay.
If I may, it is a lease that we have with him. Yes, so.
Okay.
Um, I think this is essential. This is a great opportunity to acquire the property. If you've been in the back, you've noticed it's not paved. So that's one of the things you don't want to invest in, in any kind of pavement or other improvements on a property that it's not really yours when it's leased. It also fits in very nicely. We are going to be coming to the council at the retreat with some concepts. On renovating the building and possibly expanding. So as you'll see, that, that property plays a, a key role. With any possibility of expanding the, the current footprint of the building. So we highly recommend council consideration of this request tonight.
I'll make the motion. Any other questions?
No, just a comment that I've had to park there several times for town functions, so we certainly need the space.
Going to make a, a comment as well?
A- after the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead and make the motion, Dusty.
Motion authorizing the town manager to execute a purchase agreement between the town of Cave Creek buyer and Barry Wu Cash seller. At the appraised value of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And approval authorizing the finance director to make nece, necessary budget transfers to execute the purchase.
Second.
Okay, Dusty, you had the?
No, it's long overdue. This is a property that we should have never engaged in a long-term lease. We should have bought it upfront. We've got to stop doing fifty-year agreements. I mean, they just don't work for the town. We're going to be paying for another thirty-five years for Rancho Manana. Nothing personal, but we, we don't prognosticate well beyond about the five-year mark. And to me, this is a no-brainer.
I agree with what he said, and I also think that if we don't do this, that this could get sold to the public and there goes our chance to get it. And this is too crucial of a piece of property. Like Cynthia was saying a minute ago, we all have no parking, et cetera. And the town's not getting smaller, it's getting bigger. We need to take this property.
Other council comments? Okay, this is a public comment on this. Anybody?
I have none.
Okay, I forgot that again. So we'll do a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero and.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Good evening again. So we have the second quarter finance report. The finance report includes things that are operationally based as well as some financial information. If you can, go to the next slide. So we're going to talk about some of the things that we have completed, some things that are in process. Some of the future projects that we have on our plate. There was a request that I keep the financial status very brief tonight because we will be talking more during the retreat on the status. So as Mr. Silva had indicated, what I had covered in the first quarterly report is some of the things that he talked about. There's some information related to the T P T revenues, revenues overall expenditures compared to budget. That I had included previously. We will be talking more about that in, in the retreat. The investment report, so part of our policy says that there will be a quarterly investment report presented to council. So that is included and we will be talking about performance measures. So as we go through these slides, so this first one is about some of the process and policy changes that have been made. I've got information here on the strategic plan and what applies that you'll see on each one of the slides. Most everything that's in the fiscal sustainability section of the strategic plan applies to what we do because we are the finance department. I'm not necessarily going to cover all the items that are listed on the slide. So if there's anything that you have questions about, please stop me and let me know. One of the things I wanted to point out here, which will tie to a future slide, is that we are. We have set up a process for tracking the A P invoices. We have asked the departments to make sure to let vendors know to send the invoices to finance. And then we track those so that we know whether or not we're getting them back. When they were going directly to the departments, we did not necessarily know that the invoices were out there. And so we kind of ran into a few little issues. Um, on this slide, so just some of the other things that are not process or policy related. So one of the things we did have during the quarter, we had our final field work from the auditors. They usually make two trips each year. They do some preliminary work on site and then they do the final portion of the work. Also, during the quarter, we had our budget planning meeting for the fiscal year twenty-six budget. These two areas, the audit and the budget, are very significant workloads within the finance department each time. And it's kind of seasonal work that we do. Some additional projects on the next slide, Brian. So, um, one of the things was the annual utility billing calendar that we got completed. I don't know if you're aware that what we do in conjunction with utilities department is look at the calendar. To make sure that the timing of when shut offs might be for delinquent accounts isn't just before a weekend or just before a holiday. So that we're not shutting them off and not, and then being closed and then not being able to come, get their utilities turned back on. So we work through all of that with, in conjunction with utilities. One of the other things too, it's a busy time of year. So during the quarter, we start working on year-end payroll reconciliations as part of the next quarter. We will, right now we're working on ten ninety-nines and W twos and all of that. So it's a lot of, lot of things that are happening right now in this time of year. On the next slide, some of the things that are in process, so banking services. We are just at the point of getting an account opened and ordering the check supply. And deposit slips and, and deposit materials. So we're, we're gradually getting there on the banking services. The projects that we had talked about back in October. Related to the utility rate study, financing plan, long-range forecasts, economic impact studies. So we will be talking more about those during the financial portion of the council retreat. As mentioned earlier, so one of the things on the list is reviewing the procurement code. There, I've started looking at some of that and some comparisons of what some of the other municipalities are doing. Our threshold for what the town manager is allowed to approve, up to twenty-five thousand. The, over the twenty-five thousand needs to come to council for approval is pretty low compared to other entities. And change orders and there's just some, some cleanup things that we want to be able to bring to council for some changes. The, also in process, the fiscal year twenty-four audit reports. So kind of had some back and forth with the auditors on the reports. And trying to get those all in a, in a good place. We have scheduled for February eighteenth for the auditors to present. And the intent is that I will also do a financial status discussion of what's in that fiscal year twenty-four report for council at that time. So the things that are on the future projects, next slide, Brian. So one of the things that we, Grady and I had talked. Um, so one of the things that, um, uh, we, Grady and I had talked about. So we do not have the, uh, DMO designation for the tourism bureau through the Arizona Office of Tourism. Um, so that's on the list to work on that because that'll give us an opportunity to be able to apply for some grants um, and, uh, be able to utilize some of their services and some of their programs as well. So that would help in that area. Um, also, one of the things on the list is policy regarding, um, credit card acceptance. When we had talked about with the, um, uh, banking services, one of the things that we wanted to do is encourage, um, the customers to utilize credit cards to pay their bills or to pay electronically as much as possible. When you do that, it's, um, frees up a lot of staff time because there are some duties that finance has been asked to take on that we wanted to be able to create some capacity in finance to take on some of those other duties. And, um, so what we're wanting to do is not charge an additional fee and discourage people from using credit cards. We want to encourage them because the amount of savings that we would have in staff time would more than make up for that. Um, on the next slide, um, another one of the things on the future project list, um, so we have updated the investment policy. Um, reviewing the existing financial policies, um, is on the list. And I think during the budget process, there will be some of those that will be coming to you, um, that would be related to that as well. On the next slide, so, um, as I mentioned, so we're just really having a very brief discussion about financial status tonight. So here on the, uh, fund balance summary, so for, um, the, uh, fiscal year to date, um, for the through quarter two, so from July one to December thirty-one. So we started out the fiscal year with, um, preliminary numbers of fund balance, total of thirty-eight million. Revenues for the six months are at fourteen million, expenditures at nineteen million. The other financing sources and uses, so, um, a portion of that would be drawdowns of the WIF alone for the Phoenix Interconnect project and the other items would be transfers in between funds. Um, so that nets out, uh, to the million that was drawn down from the WIF alone. And then, um, that puts us at thirty-four million, almost thirty-five million for the December thirty-one fund balance. When we record this information, this is all basically cash basis. We don't do, um, accruals in any of, of the information that we do here. That's a year-end thing that we do. So, um, there could be expenditures for, uh, goods and services that were received by December thirty-first, but those invoices just weren't paid until January. And so those would not be reflected in here. Um, also typically, we don't do the fund transfers until the end of the year. But with the, um, Cave Creek water and the transfer from the Capitol Projects, which is the Water Infrastructure Fund to help cover the Phoenix Interconnect project, I felt like that was fairly significant, that needed to, um, be shown here because otherwise we'd be showing a negative in the Cave Creek Water Fund that, um, really i- isn't applicable at this, this point in time. Um, just to point out, so there was a request to separate the enterprise funds, um, the balances there. The wastewater, so showing the wastewater fund with, as of December thirty-one, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Um, by the time we get to the end of the year and debt payments being made and all of that, um, we may likely have the same deficit that we've been having, um, in past years. The, uh, Cave Creek Water, so again, also debt payments that are, um, not made yet. So the two point nine million ending includes the beginning balance of that one point three million of the reserve for debt service. Um, so there's, um, over and above what that requirement is. Desert Hills Water, so the four hundred and eighty thousand is the debt service reserve requirement. So you can see that, um, so far as of December thirty-one, we've dropped under that amount. So there is a negative netted with that reserve balance. All right, so moving on to the investment report, um, so at this point in time, um, we're investing in the Arizona State Treasurer's Office Local Government Investment Pool. Um, there was a, almost thirty-two million as of December thirty-one. And then, um, the banking account, uh, balance, uh, about three point six million. The rate of return for December was four point one two percent. And the benchmark that was adopted by council of the three-year treasury as of December thirty-one was four point two seven. So a little under, but I wanted to explain that. So on the next slide, I have a graph. So here on the, uh, blue line is what our portfolio performance has been. And the three-year treasury is the kind of orangish reddish line that you see on your screen. Um, the local government investment pool, the LGIP, um, tends to have a lagging, um, impact based off of, um, the mid, the duration of investments that they, uh, invest in compared to what a three-year treasury is. So the three-year treasury moves a little, little bit more, a little faster than what LGIP does. So you can see in, um, the declining interest rate environment, the orange line dropped more dramatically than what the blue line did because there's some of those delays. And typically, when you have an increasing interest rate environment, it takes a little longer for that blue line to come, come back up. But as you can see, the s- the spread there for December is pretty minor compared to how much our spreads were um, in the previous months. On the next slide, so this is just some of the activity, um, with the investments for the second quarter. The, um, net drawdown on the checking accounts was about a hundred and eighty thousand. The earnings in LGIP about three hundred and seventy-six, so that gave us net transactions in our portfolio for the quarter of a positive a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And I think most of you have met Bridget Black. She is our accounting manager. And so she's going to take the next slide.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. So I'm presenting the performance measurements. Can you hear me? Now? So we were able to close the GL within ten business days. October, we closed it within two. November, we closed it within three business days and December within four business days.
And if I can interrupt her for a moment, that was Bridget. Bridget's awesome.
Um, so the GFOA award for the ACFT and for the budget, those are annual measurements, so they don't really apply yet. Um, our percentage of AP invoices paid within thirty days, we had ninety-two percent in October, a hundred percent in November and ninety-eight percent in December. Percentage of utility accounts over sixty days, we had six percent all the way across, October, November and December. Our investment return versus three-year treasury, we had four point five percent versus four point twelve in October, four point sixteen versus four point ten in November and four point twelve versus four point two seven in December. Any questions?
I have a question, if you don't mind going back to slide ten. I want to thank Mr. Silva for bringing this, our former vice mayor, for bringing this to my attention.
That's the one that says fund balance.
Accounting is not my strong suit, but on slide ten, thank you. Uh, down the bottom right, we have a fund balance of almost thirty-five million dollars. Some of that fund balance would be dedicated, correct? In other words, in order to, uh, have our WIF alone's, we have to have some money
Correct.
on, in reserve. So that is money that we've got and we have to have it there, but it's not money that we're spending.
Correct.
Okay, is of that thirty-five million dollars, how much is completely unencumbered? I think we'd get out to a point that, that all of it would be, uh, are, are, are available to us, but it wouldn't all be available necessarily to, at a particular time.
So, so there are different levels on the fund balance. So you have what is referred to as restricted, which means that there's, um, outside legal requirements. And of that amount, there's, um, fair, fairly minor amounts in some of the other places. So it would be about one point eight million on the debt service reserves. And then some of the other smaller things like, um, we get from, um, the smart and safe Arizona monies. It has to be spent legally in a certain way with the police department and things like that, but those are smaller dollar amounts. Um, then there's whatever's been, um, committed by ordinance by the council. And then what we refer to as assigned, where it's, uh, more just a, a general direction on things than not necessarily an ordinance. Um, which in the general fund for the budget process, there was a fairly significant amount in the budget that was, um, identified. I believe it was around twenty-two million, um, to set aside for capital projects.
Thank you.
Questions from council?
Just a comment. Thank you for not reading all those slides. That is much appreciated.
Second.
Aye.
Anybody else, uh, have, have a question? We have public comment on this? Although we don't have public comment, it's a department report, excuse me.
I just had a, a couple of comments. Um, so despite this being the Reader's Digest of financial reports, I thought it was, uh, very telling. The other thing I wanted to share with the council is, um, as the finance director mentioned, when we have our council retreat on February sixth, there will be a considerable, um, amount more that you'll see, um, at that retreat. In addition to that, we're also going to have, um, economist Jim Rounds, who has done previous analyses, uh, for the, for the, um, town. And so he's going to be, um, that's going to be kind of dovetailing into what, what Sherry's doing here. So, um, anyways, there's going to be quite a bit of financials that will be helping us um, and giving us some guidance and direction on some of the future decisions that will be brought before the council about our, our, uh, capabilities of, of funding things going forward. So just wanted to share that with you and, um, we'll be getting off an agenda, um, likely to the council the week before the retreat and that's the sixth. So, uh, we're coming upon that pretty soon. Um, the mayor and I actually have a meeting tomorrow that we're going to use some of that time to help finalize the plan for the agenda for that day. So.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, that, uh, you, you're finding things all the time, like the council payable. How do you track council payable if, if you have a shotgun effect on where the, where the invoices go? So I, I really, I really want to compliment both of you on the improvements, the gas sale, the, the budgeting. Um, you know, we, there is a clearly upward trajectory in our finance and accounting. And we have thirty-five million bucks in the bank, so it's not bad either.
Yeah.
Can I get one last compliment to the communications director on his annual report? It was very well done. It summarized, uh, our activities for FY twenty-four. And, um, it, it's, it's just a very nice document to show to the public on what we've accomplished over the year. So, thank you.
So is the prospectors. Prospector, I'm just blown away by how good that is.
Thank you.
Don't get the big head, though. Okay, well, uh, that completes our agenda tonight, so meeting adjourned. Thank you.